All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is James Kretikos. I work at the Amne Associates. Here with me this evening is Larry Fraser with Pride Mark, the applicant. New faces for you guys probably are used to seeing Link Sweetrack from my office, as well as Jim Bartlett-Yell from Pride Mark. They're conveniently both on vacation, so you can be here tonight. As the chairman noted, we are looking for final subdivision approval for Section 2 of the Greenbrier Crossing project, which is over on the corner of Route 250 and State Road. I'm sure you guys have driven by it several times and seen the active construction going on from Section 1. We were last here in front of you guys back in February of 2021. At that meeting, you guys granted overall seeker approval for the entire 124 lot subdivision, as well as the final Section 1 site and subdivision approval that they've been working through constructive activities today. We were here the month prior to that, where we received the overall preliminary approval for the entire subdivision. Section 2 that we are looking to develop is entirely consistent with what we provided with the overall preliminary applications. As shown kind of on the graphic here, this has been an install, the permanent final entrance on the New York State Route 250, so Webster Road. Right now, there's currently a temporary construction entrance there. It's in the same location as where the permanent road will be. They've been using that to access into the site, bring in fill materials and such to enable the development of Section 2. With this next section, as the chairman noted, we're looking to do 40 townhouse units. It's going to consist of seven four-unit buildings, as well as four three-unit buildings, and approximately about a 2,000-square community center clubhouse for use of the residents and the HOA that would be formed with this. Most of the infrastructure has already been done and enabled. A lot of the stormwater facilities, including the large stormwater pond, has already been installed, stabilized, constructed. So that's going to continue to manage runoff from the developed areas and the active construction areas. We will be making a new connection to the water supply system over on New York State Route 250, and extending that into the site. It'll create a loop and connect to some of the other infrastructure, water main utilities that were being installed currently with Section 1. The standard area sewers, similarly, we already completed our connection along State Road, so that will really just be extended throughout the future right-of-way areas and streets as we build out the rest of the development. We're having consistent landscape and lighting plans with what we did for Section 1. Those are all included within the design plans. We'll be using the same village standard 14-foot-high top-laid fixtures, as well as some additional plantings around some of the decorative pond areas that we're going to have over by Route 250, as well as kind of adjacent to the clubhouse. For the total disturbance on Section 2, if everything in Section 1 was fully completed and we were starting like this was from new scratch, would be about 22 acres of disturbance. With this next phase, we will be looking to clear some additional trees in the Section 3 area, similar to what we did when we did Section 1. This will enable us to continue to bring in fill, replace, and that future section help us kind of move along with the construction process. Pride Mark's been having great success selling these lots already, which is why we're back so soon, and we're looking to just kind of roll right into Section 2. And then, obviously, if things continue, we'll be looking probably to roll right into Sections 3 and 4 and keep everything moving and get this all bundled up. That's pretty much the gist of what we're here tonight for. I'm happy to answer any detailed, specific questions you guys have regarding the design. Again, it's very consistent with what we did from an overall review with you guys previously. I did just talk with Mr. Thompson, too, on some of his initial comments. I think they're all minor plan adjustments, and we're happy to make everything that we discussed, so.
I've got one question for you. You mentioned that the water line was going to be a loop coming in off 250 for Phase 2. Is that any different than what was already there? And is it just going to increase the capacity?
Kind of. This one's a little interesting situation because we're actually bordered by two different pressure zones from the water authorities. So with Section 1, we connected off of State Road because that's where Pride Mark wanted to start the development. Once we make Section 2 and bring in the true water service from New York State Route 250, we're actually going to switch over the entire pressure system to that system because it actually is about 20 PSI higher, and all these buildings will be better served by that. So it'll end up around 60 PSI pressures in the main as opposed to 40. So it's going to just be a little bit better use for all the future residents there.
You said you're going to change over the entire pressure. Is that for the entire setup or just for Phase 2?
Yeah, so basically, what happened, you know, stuff was back. When we started Section 1, we made a connection here. With Section 2, we're going to end up bringing our water main in here, which will then tie into where we stubbed it to here, finish this loop, and it'll kind of make this Section 2 loop. We're going to basically end up with a closed valve here to isolate the two different pressure zones. This has all been reviewed by the water authority already, and this is being done at their direction. But ultimately, we'll probably have the water changed over before most of the units come online, so you won't even ever notice, or the residents would never notice a change. And it's not going to affect how many of the existing residents in the village will operate.
This is just a curiosity question right now. As I drive by on State Road, I can see the new activity taking place that's facing State Road. How's that going? Have those been sold yet or are those going up to sell?
So I think Larry told me before the meeting that approximately 16 of the lots in Section 1 were sold. There was a total of 31. So they're about half sold already, even before they then built. And they expect to kind of continue with the way the market's done, sell most pretty aggressively.
But 16 would be the first ones numbered up to 116?
I believe we were using a numbering scheme that started with the 100. So it'll be 100 through 131 would be the Section 1 plans. And then we'll have 200. I mean, the actual addresses of the lots might be assigned as they're created when the maps filed.
Okay.
In the first building going up, there's the buildings here. There's one unit that's sold. We have our temporary model that's going to go up. When we finish Section 2, we'll move our model over to here, so we have a permanent model. So at this building right now, we have two specs, one sold unit and one model. The second building that's going up, the foundation, is in now. That is sold out. Our third building, that we're hoping to start next month, that is sold out, and we just sold this building up here, which will be Building 4, and we have public sales over here. And then, there's a few in the other buildings. So it's going relatively quickly, and most of them are sold out in the direction that we're going.
Other questions from members on the board?
So this is just... Are these buildings being sold to individuals or to corporations?
Individuals.
Is that a model that you generally try to...
It's not a model. It's not a 55-hour community, though that is the majority of the people that live there.
But they're not being bought by, you know, investment firms or any of them?
What's the sale price of those?
They're starting right now in the low 3s.
You can afford it, Aaron.
Go ahead with another question.
There's a little black fox off 250 at the entry road. Yeah, what is that?
I believe that was a location that they were looking to cite for a future signage application that we would be in to discuss with you guys.
Okay, so mine is...
Yes.
You know you're going to come to a whole grid of a row for that thing.
Yeah, well, once we probably get through and get a little bit further in construction, we'll be back with graphics, rendering, and exactly what we're looking to get through. We understand that that is not part of the approval tonight.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Is life going so well for you?
It is. Surprising movements.
Okay. So then, what we're looking for is an action on the scheduled matter that's before us, and that's the applicant seeks final subdivisions plan approval to develop Phase 2 of 44.1 acres for the 40 townhouse lots or units and the proposed community center.
All right, you want to open it for the public?
Good point. Any comments from the general public?
Yes. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Is there and will there ever be a connection to the village? Richard Walter, 20 East, for the record. Your project has made itself known from the beginning that you do not want to be part of the village. You had your own community center, your own everything, and you don't really associate with the rest of us. Well, because we've asked several times to connect the sidewalk to the village, just a simple crosswalk, so that village residents can come up and enjoy walking around your project on the sidewalks.
Yeah, that sidewalk was added to the Section 1 approval. That will be actually...
That sidewalk's added what I'm talking about, the crosswalk across.
We can certainly discuss with the Mineral County DOT if they do want to allow us placement of a crosswalk across that. They typically will regulate the distance to county road.
I realize you would probably have to put a curb on the other side or something, a landing pad, and paint a crosswalk and a sign that says "Crosswalk."
Yeah, that's something that also would have to go before state and county because it's actually State Route 250. They would have to be involved in that project. It has nothing to do with the village.
State Road is a county highway.
Right.
So, but they are the people that should get approval for this, rather than wait a year or two when a kid crosses the street and gets hit, and then the county put in a crosswalk.
But the county has to approve all that.
Yes, I know, but now is the time to start working towards that so that it is approved by time this project is done.
So when the county sees that sidewalk stub, then they'll have to look and evaluate the road in order for all the crosswalks. It's not up to this applicant or to this board to determine where the crosswalk is.
Well, what I'm saying is this applicant should notify the county and try to get the county to come...
It should.
Correct. If the county is aware of the sidewalk we are proposing here, and they did not get take us to install a crosswalk or any signs there, but we can certainly, you know, reach out and ask them if that's something that would be allowed to do.
And another question is how the sidewalk now ends back a ways from 250. I would like to see it extended the other 20, 30 feet out to 250, to the right-of-way. After that, it's a state's problem, I realize. But for a future connection, should the state or anybody try to put in sidewalks? We, Village Webster lately, has been trying to go back to being a walking village.
Yeah, and these were all things that were reviewed. I mean, we can certainly...
I live in an old section of the village, and I'll tell you, everybody walks by the street. People bring their dogs in from outside into town. They walk in the village. Also, here, one of the press... The village has not shown the sidewalk in front of the view.
That's how I'm not...
No, no, I know it's not a crosswalk.
It will not have the... The Section 1 plans don't have the sidewalk in, and these aren't... We have a lot of sidewalks. It's not part of the Section 1 structure, which is probably what's... You look at the overall approval.
Mr. Walter, excuse me. Someone is trying to take minutes. Now, this is a public hearing. You're supposed to be addressing this board and the applicant, but to sit there and have a conversation that nobody knows what they're talking about really isn't appropriate. So, you know, if you've got specific questions, ask them.
Okay. I have one more question. The clubhouse shows a parking lot, a sidewalk going by the front. Could we get a crosswalk painted or a sidewalk across the parking lot so people walking can get to the clubhouse without... with a reasonable safety?
Something that we can review with the applicant?
Sidewalk goes by, but there's no sidewalk across the... Something from the front walk to the front door. We built a bank in town here several years ago. There has no way to get to it unless you walk through the parking lot.
This is a private clubhouse, so it's not a public...
I know that, but the private people living there should have the safety of a walk to the front door.
But it's through, so you want a sidewalk in the middle of the parking?
No, I want on the section of green space, so when you get there, you don't walk up the road, you walk across. The way to the front door from the sidewalk is up the driveway. It should be up a... There should be a front walk at least across the island in front. In my neighborhood, we all have front walks. And Wilmore, there are front walks leading out to a sidewalk that was never built.
And I'll go back to your particular property in the village itself is much older than this and has, and they all have sidewalks on them. Most of the chance track, I don't know much sidewalk going on.
No, there's no sidewalk there, but it was designed for sidewalk because all the houses were originally built with front walks that led out and stopped about six feet from the curb.
But they didn't come in out there?
Yeah. And what I'm saying is, let's eliminate that mistake and go back to having walks that lead out to the sidewalk. We built a bank here several years ago on Main Street. It doesn't have any way to walk to it in the winter time because you've got to walk up to driveway.
Okay, fair enough. We bet your request is on the table.
Thank you.
I don't know that we can deal with it. I don't know anyone else can deal with it, but at least it's openly on the table.
Thank you.
All right. Any other thoughts on any of those comments?
Couple of other things. We're discussing the five-acre, the original one. Is that... are you making that cover everything or are you going to need an additional five-acre?
We'll have to review that in terms of SWIP to see exactly what the language in the five-acre request was. And you do know the open notice of intent permit through the DEC covers the entire development as a whole. So if anything, it would just be an additional lot and explaining the sequencing will be following for Section 2 activities to the town, or the village's SWIP administrator.
Okay, yeah, just let me know on that. And then also, for the Phase 2, is an initial letter of credit going to be needed?
Yep, we will be requiring another letter of credit for all the public-dedicated utilities and things, very consistent with what we did for Section 1.
Okay, and that's something that you're going to deal with that's not in this at all?
Right.
Okay, but we just want to make...
Well, it is part of the...
Oh, yeah.
You're going to have to have your engineer come up with an estimate of the cost of the infrastructure improvements for Phase 2. And then this board approves the amount, and the village board approves the form of the letter of credit.
Correct.
So, okay, that's what you did the last time.
Yep, yeah, we've already actually started working together on the estimate, so we'll probably have that over to you guys in a couple of weeks, through you.
Wonderful.
Perfect. Thank you.
So let me ask you, get to what Mr. Walter was talking about. You've got a very similar development, I don't know, about three-quarters of a mile down State Road. And there's a clubhouse there. Is there a sidewalk that goes to the front door of that clubhouse?
There's a sidewalk that comes down and ends at that parking lot, and then it's very similar setup to this, but no, they do not join.
Two wrongs don't make a right.
I mean, if someone in the board would like us to incorporate it, it'd be very simple for us to create a...
Let's do this so that we got one set of questions going on and one comment. Did you guys need to share anything with us?
Well, no, I was just showing them where I believe Rick wants the sidewalk is. It basically goes around the parking lot and then ties into the sidewalk that goes down the street. So if somebody's walking down the street to the clubhouse, they have an access on a sidewalk to the clubhouse rather than walking down the driveway and through the parking lot. Sort of makes sense.
Is that something you want to put in the final subdivision?
I'm okay either way. Doesn't bother me either way. If it works for them now, when the development gets up the road and they haven't had any complaints, residents complaining about walking in the sidewalk or the street, I'm fine with it.
I would say, I'm familiar with the other one. One of my brothers lives there. And I've been to that clubhouse, which is wonderful, by the way. And hopefully, this one will be very similar to that.
It is very similar.
They're markedly different locations within the subdivision. This one is sort of in the middle of everything, whereas that one is right off of State Road. It's like one of the very first buildings off of State Road. So it's a practical matter.
Is that the one over behind Unit or behind these? I think I've been over there. I just can't remember exactly where it is.
It's on the... Just west of Paris, or east of Harris Road where T is on State.
That was the one.
Yeah, it's almost opposite where Harris Road ends or starts depending on your point of view. But that one, the clubhouse, is at the very beginning of the subdivision. And my guess is, and that track literally goes back a ways. It's on much more land than this one. And so my guess is that unless you're one of the residents that lives in the very first couple of buildings, everybody drives to that clubhouse for an activity. Because frankly, it's a hike if you're... Whereas this one is sort of in the middle, so maybe a sidewalk can...
The other concern that I have is that if you have people with a handicap, you know, wheelchair, scooters, or whatever, a sidewalk would probably help. People with baby carriages or stuff like that would probably help them there instead of the cop going across the parking lot. So there seems to be, you know, it makes sense to have this thing.
I don't think we have any issues with incorporating a little bit of additional sidewalk there to make a more direct connection with, you know, what we need to delineate it.
So my sense of things is, and I don't know what Mr. Walter exactly wants, but I vision a U shape coming out to the other sidewalk and then blending in with your existing sidewalk at the end of...
The board wants us to extend sidewalk around the perimeter of the parking lot, essentially on both sides.
It'd be like a U shape going, or a horseshoe shape.
Yeah, we can certainly accommodate that.
So that would be part of any approval that you were seeking right now?
I guess my request would be to just create a condition that would create some additional sidewalk connections to the clubhouse right-of-way as part of the rule. And we can, we're going to have some other plan changes, you know, per Mr. Thompson before we run anything for signature, things like that.
Yeah, you have two choices. You can either make them come back and show you the plan with these sidewalks and not give your approval on it, or you can make it a condition and rely on Aaron to make sure that they're...
All right. So how do you guys want to take this? Gentlemen, how do we want to take this?
I'd say make it conditional. I mean, it's minor, it's pretty... The whole development's consistent with the overall approval except for adding the sidewalk. So I think Aaron can handle the sidewalk on the plan. That's my opinion.
So you're going to make the sidewalk part of the condition?
Yeah, approval is based on they providing the new plans with the sidewalk on it on their side.
Do they have to come back to us for that?
No.
I don't think so.
Except for the letter of credit approval.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, it does.
Okay, then, what I'd like is a motion.
Actually, I have one comment. I would, I am disappointed that there are no representatives of the public who voiced their opposition to this project early on, who complained vehemently that this project was going to, in some way, be a detriment to their drainage issues. So I am now infinitely curious to see if, in fact, everything we've done has, in fact, improved as we envisioned it would and improved their drainage issues on the adjacent properties.
The other thing that that group did is they called and they came in and they talked about headlights shining it on their own front of their houses and in their windows.
Well, nobody's driving in and out yet. We don't know yet. But now is the time when drainage issues become very evident. And I would love to know if all their properties are bone-dried, better than they've ever been because of all the work that's already been done.
I definitely did not attest to that, but I...
I mean, has anybody calling to complain that their properties are being flooded or no? Or you never get that feedback?
I do know we're regularly paying attention to the ponds, especially over some of these larger precipitation events, and it looks like it's functioning exactly as designed. Obviously, a lot more development is still is to come, which will all be routed to that facility, but as far as we can tell today, it's doing what it was intended to do.
I will say, though, I've had people call saying that that size pond is good for the area. Even people that don't live around there are more interested in, you know, purchasing the site for their area of house, but I've had people complimenting all the water it is and, you know, it's going to improve the area.
It's designed to do a specific job.
And that's just one of several ponds going on the property.
All right. So going back to where we are and what we've got on the table. Have we got a motion? The applicant was seeking final subdivision plan approval to develop Phase 2 of the 44.1 acres for 40 townhouse lot units and a proposed community center.
I would like to make a positive recommendation for final subdivision plan approval for the development of Phase 2 of the 44.1 acres for 40 townhouse development and the proposed community center with the added condition to do consideration to add and include an attachment sidewalk between the development sidewalk and the community center front sidewalk.
So tell us again, tell us again exactly where that is because I want to make sure we get that in.
Is it one side or both sides? A U shape? I think one side is more than that, right?
So now, she was looking at me, who I'm on this side, so now I've got to walk across the...
You got nothing or you got something?
Is that though, I don't approve that, or...
One obviously would be nicer to me, but it's doable. Yeah, we could bring it around both sides. We could do whatever the board wants. I don't think it's a significant one way or the other.
So it depends on where you're walking.
So it depends on where you're walking from. Coming from the east, we'd like to see one on the east. On the west, we want it on the west. Walk all the way across the parking lot, depending on which way you're coming to go up to the clubhouse. So that was Larry's idea, wasn't it? That was his U shape. Make it uniform in most settings.
Okay. I mean, I'd have to provision that side.
All right.
Be on it on both sides of the parking lots to form, call it a U shape.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, we've got that motion on the table on the floor. We've got a second. All in favor? Hold on.
So they're also seeking final site plan approval, which, as the code exists, it's controlled site approval under 175 for any of the code. So do you want to do two separate motions or throw them all in one?
I don't see that.
Isn't the final subdivision Phase 2 only?
Well, if you look at the, if you look at before, under the overall plan, you gave it both subdivision and site plan, and reserved for each phase. So Phase 1, you did both. Technically, it also needs the site plan approval too. You got the site plan in front of you. It wasn't advertised that way, but the controlled site use isn't subject to a public hearing anyhow. So it really doesn't matter that it wasn't published. But I think just to be, just to be safe, you should grant both.
So what would be the second one you would grant?
Call it either site plan approval or controlled site approval?
It's a motion on this ground, something like you planned approval too.
Like site plan. And then Aaron had, it's the final subdivision plan approval is what it says. Aaron, Aaron had a couple of change, changes that I guess he discussed with you beforehand. So those will be, have to be incorporated into the final as well. You can, please up here, I'm not even sure what I mean.
And that's just really in your review of the site plan as well?
Yeah, yeah. But they're aware of it, but they know, you know, the conditions are...
Oh, these are Jake's comments, though?
Yeah. Yeah, mine and Jake's.
So you can, you can also, the second condition would just be incorporating those conditions and...
Comments, clarifications, and corrections.
And then you can just, well, you can give Joe a copy, so she can make it part of the minutes.
All right, do we have to openly do that? I think we do.
You have to make it part of the resolution, yes, to add a second condition.
All right, so Condition 1 is the inclusion of connector sidewalks from the subdivision sidewalks into the community center on both sides of the parking lot. Condition 2 is the incorporation of Jake Swingly's...
Of today.
...comments, conditions, and/or corrections to the plans as noted. Right?
Had to do it, it was done today.
All right, and that's the comments as located in this email, dated 22nd, 4th, 23rd, and 24th, for each by Phase 2. You are aware of them? You have them?
Yep.
Okay. So they're not, no surprises, no surprises?
Right, so because right now, this doesn't have you on the list, but I'm assuming you've seen...
I, we went over them with Mr. Thompson right before the meeting, so we are aware.
Okay, so you, all right.
And Joe, you're gonna, you'll need all these for the notes? Okay. Okay, so that's Motion 1.
So we've got a motion on the table to approve the final subdivision plan and to make as part of that plan the Jake Swingly comments or notes that came out on the 22nd and have been shared with the contractors. Who else did this? Oh, on the, that's right, the sidewalk, both left and right side.
Of the community center parking lot.
Of the community center. So that's the condition. Seconded?
So that's your whole amendment? Okay, I will second that as well.
So that motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Good luck.
Next motion, final site plan approval for Phase 2. Is it done?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion for final site plan approval for the construction of Phase 2. As part of the overall settlement. I'll second.
Did you say what?
I'll second.
And it's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. You have a very good year, man.
Thank you.